Just talking about the Governor's Executive Order on March 16, 2020, which suspends the Open Meeting Act provisions related to an in-person attendance by members of a public body. Specifically, the Governor's Order Number One suspends the requirement in Section 2.01 that members of a public body must be physically present, and Two, suspends limitations in Section Seven on when remote participation is allowed. So in order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, Executive Order 2020-07 furthermore encourages public bodies to postpone public business where possible. Therefore, tonight's agenda has been kept to a minimum. The Open Meeting Act requires public bodies to allow for public comment. This meeting will feature public comments. Even if members of the public don't provide comment, I want everyone to know and be advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and they're not required to identify themselves. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by web or audio conference. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the Village website, and we've recommended that members and the public follow on the agenda as posted. Now, we have a few ground rules for this business meeting. Before turning to the first item on the agenda, I want to cover some of these ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Mayor Berry, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I, the Chair, will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions. And please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. There's a little microphone icon, and you can click it and unclick it. Please try to get familiar with that. Also, remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. It's going to be a challenge for Jane to do unless we do that. So if any response or comment on any items, please wait until the floor to you, and always state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through I, the Chair, taking care of identifying yourself. And for items of public comment, I don't have that page. So for public comments, I'm not going to read them, but just reflect that we have them. Counsel, anything I want to add on public comments, sir?
You can add the name if you want, and you received it, but you don't need to.
Okay. So does anyone have questions before we get started on that? Okay, so now we're going to start with the... So Jane, can you take the roll, please?
Yes. President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Mallow? Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
Trustee Olenichik?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Phelan?
Here.
Trustee Vorder?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by the nation's Constitution, under God, in the Constitution of the Republic, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Item three is public comments. We did receive public comments today from Airplane Bob Zutoff, and the Board has a copy of these comments, and I just want the record to reflect that we received them in the Clerk's office, and she did distribute them to every Board member. So Bob, your comments are being noted, sir, and thank you for taking the time to let us know, okay? Item four, conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to item five. It's a request to approve Oaklawn Baseball and Softball Parade for 2020. I'm going to ask for a motion, please, on item five. Trustee Mallow has made the motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second is Trustee Olenichik. Is there any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, please call a vote, Clerk Quinlan. Call a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item six is approval of meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes 2020-05 dated March 10, 2020. Does anyone have a mo... Can I have a motion, please, on item six?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. That was Trustee Vorder who made that motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was Trustee Stalker?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't see your picture for some reason, Trustee. I'm sorry. Okay, very good. Any discussion? Let's call a vote, please.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. We're going to go on to new business by Village Trustees, Agenda Item Seven. We're going to start today in District Six. Trustee Phelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to keep this brief for everybody's benefit. I just wanted to touch on three items. First being the Finance Committee meeting we had last week, which either every trustee and the mayor attended or dialed into, I believe. So I won't belabor the many things we covered, but suffice to say, we are in a crisis, both financially and because of the virus. And we'd asked Brian Hanning and Adam Metz and Chief Palmer to really do a deep dive on our budget, look at things from as austere position as possible, and to really demonstrate that everybody in the Village Administration, all the employees, we could all pull together and, you know, commit to the community that we are, you know, one with them, and we are going to sacrifice to the greatest extent we can without, you know, again, laying people off if we don't have to, furloughing. But one of the comments that came up during the meeting was, well, we might have finances to carry us for another month or two, and then maybe we would look at some scenarios. The consensus of the Finance Committee and those in the room were, we don't have the luxury of waiting because nobody knows. The good news is, looking at the chart that Deputy Chief Riddle has provided, it looks like we're trending somewhat better lately, but we're also hearing reports that this could come back again in the fall. So from that perspective, I wanted to thank Chief Palmer for shepherding, you know, the Village during this difficult time, as we all know, doing two jobs. And there were several items that Brian Hanning and Adam are tackling all at once, and I know they're going to cover some of that in executive session tonight, but I just wanted to share with everybody. I think everybody is on the same page. It's in a terrible environment like this. I think Governor Cuomo said it's best. When the politics enter a situation like this, it's corrosive and it feeds on itself. The good news is, I think we have a Board and a staff and administration who is unified in making sure that we are doing the best we can for our residents and our businesses in this tough environment. The next item I wanted to talk about, I referenced with Deputy Chief Riddle's report. Again, a difficult environment we're all operating in, uncharted waters, and I know I can speak for myself and at least a couple of other trustees who are, you know, communicating with residents, who are scared, uncertain, questioning things, even as mundane as yard waste pickup. We're all getting those kinds of questions, but also what's the situation with Christ Hospital, and we've had some frustrations there. It's one of the few hospitals in the state that I can tell that's reluctant to share specific information, even with us. And by us, I mean the Village of Oaklawn, or at minimum our police and fire departments. It's an ongoing frustration. The mayor and I had a conversation about it. The trustees and the full Board and the management staff have had email conversations with the president of the hospital, and I still think we need to do some work here. As I think we all can agree, I don't want to suggest that Oaklawn's more important than any other community, but certainly we are different in that the hospital fits in our footprint, and all of the benefits and, of course, all of the problems that come with that fall on our police and our fire primarily. And I do, and I know the mayor was committed to pursuing this further with the president of the hospital. I think we need to do that, even though we may be coming on the downside. I don't think we should let this issue not get resolved to a, you know, to at least to a situation where the Village is more informed on a more frequent basis. And then lastly, I wanted to thank the Board, the trustees, and the various groups in the community for the reach out, and in particular, the men's clubs and the wives of St. Catherine's, St. Linus, St. Gerald's, and St. Germain. By last count, we have about 70 people who volunteered to take anywhere from 10 to 20 seniors who may or may not have someone to rely upon, and reach out to them and let them know that they have a direct contact. And that program, for lack of a better term, has yielded great results, if for another reason than the people, the community, just very, very happy that, you know, it is such a great community, and I just wanted to make sure we thank those people. We can't thank them all by name, but it's a great group effort. Even Terry, laid up as he was, was, you know, shepherding some of the guys out of St. Germain's, and we're still getting new people joining up every day. So I just wanted to finish by saying, you know, thank you to everybody who's doing that, and I also learned that that effort, Art Clark is collecting data on that because the federal government may provide funds to the Village to be used. Not that anybody's doing it for the money, but we are going to collect the data on how many hours and how many people are put in, and I'll get that over to Art Clark. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. District Five, Trustee Stalker?
No new business at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, District Four, Trustee Vorder?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to report on a development in 85th and Plasky. As a result of the virus, the construction has been put on hold. Hopefully, that'll be lifted, and we can want to finish that project up. Although I did see some landscapers out there yesterday. I did see landscapers out there yesterday doing work, so I don't know exactly where it's at. And I know that Trustee Olenichik is going to touch on the refuge pickup, and I've gotten a number of calls on it, so I will, I'll let Trustee Olenichik deal with that, and I'd like to comment after. That's okay, Sandy. Here. That's all.
District Three, Trustee Mallow?
Thanks, Mayor. Really, just at this time, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the residents of Oaklawn for the determination, I see, to stay indoors, to social distance where they can. I see that people are a little more patient with each other, deluding to grocery stores. I see people outside walking to get exercise. They're really doing the best they can in this difficult time. Hopefully, we see this come to an end quicker rather than later, but I think Oaklawn and its resolve to beat this has been encouraging. I'm still deeply saddened to hear day after day, the pandemic has caused the death that it has caused, and I ask that the residents of Oaklawn do everything they can to stay indoors, to save lives. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Trustee Olenichik, District Two?
Yes, Mayor. Before going into the good news of the Village of Oaklawn, I just want to cover one of the things that all of us of trustees have been facing, and our village has been facing. Our Waste Management Company had decided not to pick up yard waste for a short period of time, better to be able to take care of the refuse and extra recycling that was going on. It was supposed to be for a defined period of time. It turned into an undefined period of time, but I will tell you that after a couple of phone calls this evening and getting an update and getting ahold of our legal counsel, I was able to talk to Ernie at Republic, and the good news is that Republic is going to do full yard waste pickup starting Monday, so they will be picking up not only the brown bins...
You broke up a little bit. There was some background noise. Can you repeat what you just said? You talked to Ernie and...
Yeah, I talked to Ernie at Republic, and the good news is that Republic is going to resume full yard waste pickup starting Monday. They are going to pick up not only the brown recycle bins, but they will also be picking up any other recycling. So that's really good news, and I do appreciate the partnership that Republic has, and I appreciate the patience that our residents have had during this difficult time. And I do understand why Republic did it. They wanted to keep their drivers inside of trucks and using mechanical arms to hoist, so I appreciate that they're coming back to picking up everything. And the very, very good news for the Village of Oaklawn is this pandemic has brought a lot of people, even though we can't spend time close together, we've been doing WebExes. I know my wife and her friends have been with her family. I know that there's been a lot of phone calls made, and as Tom alluded to, the various church organizations have reached out to their senior citizens that have had a hard time during this. And I can personally tell you that there are many people out there working to make sure our seniors and residents that aren't able to go out are getting nourishment and are getting errands run for them, and that really, you know, in a situation that can be overwhelmingly depressing sometimes, and you see the positive news and the help of neighbors helping neighbors, and I just got to tell you that it's a really beautiful thing, and I commend every resident in the Village of Oaklawn, and we need to keep that up. We need to stay positive, and I know that we're talking about a baseball parade. I can tell you that my 12-year-old is itching to get onto a field and play baseball, and I know that this too will happen at some point. So that concludes my report. Stay positive. Stay inside.
Thank you very much, Trustee Olenichik. Trustee Desmond, District One?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, with the yard waste, I got a lot of calls on that. Thank you to Trustee Olenichik for terrifying all that, but just to confirm, so Republic will pick up yard waste in other containers, not just the brown ones? They will also pick them up on other containers? Is that correct?
That is correct. They will be picking up full-blown yard waste pickup.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then one other thing, you know, just I guess the follow-up and Trustee Phelan's comments after a finance meeting, you know, hopefully, you know, the cost-cutting and other sacrifice we may have to make, hopefully, we won't have to get there. If we can get to the, as they call it, flatten the curve, and that we won't have to make sacrifices, or we won't have to tighten the belts. But I think if we do, if we ever get to that stage where we have to talk about, you know, having to cut services or cut payroll, you know, I think that as elected officials, we should lead by example, and if we are, before we ask any employee to tighten their belt, I think as elected officials, we should tighten our own first, and if that means deferring our own pay, little as it is, I know we probably get paid the least of any municipality in the county, I think we need to start with ourselves. They say the book stops here, but it also has to stop there. So I think we should, if we go down that road, we have to lead by example, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Desmond. Those were excellent comments. Trustee Vorder, you had asked to weigh in after Trustee Olenichik commented?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, Trustee Olenichik answered my questions. I spoke with Republic several days ago when they were informing me as to why they were not picking up the refuge, the yard waste. But obviously, Alex has talked to him since, and he's answered my question, so that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to number eight, the Village Managers' Report. Chief?
Good afternoon, Board and Mayor. Just a few things, I want to really thank our staff for stepping up and working from home, those that can work from home, and those that are still coming in on a routine basis to keep the Village moving forward, keep permits going. I mean, I can give names of all the staff that are out there, but it's quite a lot to go through, but I definitely want to thank Brian Hanning, who's been my right-hand man during this whole process of sitting down, and Adam, and all the department heads that are really digging deep on this to try to get us all through this tough time right now. And that would be my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. I'm going to move on to item nine on the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 9A is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral to approve a plan of vacation for a portion of 105th Street. This was a 5-0-1 vote to approve addition number 2020-2, School District 218 is the petitioner in District Five. And then we have item B, like boy, an ordinance granting that request. May I have a motion, please? Oops, I'm just reading this. I'm sorry. C, Ordinance 2006-16. This is an ordinance setting the time and date for a public hearing to consider the amended redevelopment plan and project for the Patriot Station Tiff Redevelopment Project area and convening a joint review board in connection therewith. Item D is approval of an engagement letter from RSM US LLC regarding the completion of 2018 audit. May I have a motion, please, on item nine?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Vorder made that motion. I believe Trustee Mallow is our second. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to call the vote, please, on Agenda Item Nine. And Jane, you might be muted. I'm not sure.
I haven't touched anything. Trustee Mallow?
Okay, no, we hear you. Let's call the vote on item nine, please.
All right. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item 10 is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral granting a special use permit for a restaurant at 9600 South Polaski Road. This was a 8-0 vote to addition number 2020-1, 96th and Polaski LLC is the petitioner in District Four. And item 11 is an ordinance granting that request. May I have a motion on item 10? And I just want to make sure that we're not on mute. I'm going to request it again. May I have a motion on item 10, please? Hearing no motion on item 10, that Agenda item dies for lack of a motion. Item 11 as well.
Excuse me. This is Fahim Lakani with 96th and Polaski LLC. Can you say why? What does it mean that it dies, that there's lack of a motion?
You could look it up. It will not move forward, sir, unless we get a motion and a second.
Is Trustee Vorder on the line?
So what I will do is if you could reach out to Steve Raddus, he can tell you how to proceed from there. Okay?
Very patiently for this hearing so that we can hear on this matter. I'd like an explanation for why it's not moving forward.
I don't have one, sir, unfortunately, and I guess, you know, we don't open the meeting for a group discussion. It's just within the Board. So I'm going to ask you to take that comment and your questions tomorrow with Steve Raddus or with our manager, Chief Palmer, okay? And they can direct you what to do from there. Thank you. Moving on to item 12, Village Clerk's Report.
Approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020-06D, dated March 24, 2020, in the amount
Thank you. May I have a motion on 12A, please?
Motion to pay the bills, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Phelan, correct?
It was Trustee Stalker.
Trustee Stalker. I'm sorry, sir. Pardon me. Seconded by Trustee Stalker. Any discussion, gentlemen? Let's call the roll, please, Jane.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Motion passes. And B, approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020-07D, dated April 14, 2020, in the amount of $5,317,439.39.
Thank you, Jane. May I have a motion on item 12B, please?
And make a motion to approve.
Trustee Desmond made that motion, seconded by Trustee Vorder. Is that correct?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Motion passes. And item C, Mayor, under General Village Matters, the 2020 census form completion date has been extended from July 31, 2020 until August 14, 2020. Thank you for your diligence in completing this form. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the Village President's Report, item 13, and I just have a few comments. I want to, Jane, since you were talking about the census, for every person who sends that form in or goes online and does that form, it's $1,400 to our community. So not only is it important to make sure we get the right number of representatives in Washington, but it also helps fund a lot of the programs that we rely on. There's been some discussion, the mayors are petitioning to move that census further out, and they're asking for an extra 120 days because they don't want people to be going door to door. And remember, no one would have to go door to door if you just take a minute or two and fill out that form or go online and do that. If you need help doing that, it's easy to do. Almost anyone can teach you how to go online and do that. I want to thank our entire staff. It's been absolutely crazy, as you could imagine. When all of this was happening, it seemed like it was happening just so quickly, and we all kind of thought building, but it's really a challenge for this team. The staff working at home are still conducting Village business... The staff working at home are still conducting village business. They're doing a fine job. Our first responders are out there every day making sure that we're safe. Our emergency operations center is really, really bringing the community together, making sure the resources are where they need to be and when, and interfacing with everyone. And the hospital, you know, is ground zero for this, and to have such a large medical center in our community is both a blessing and a curse, and it brings many unique challenges, and trustee Phelan talked about those a little bit. You know, we're trying to make sure we can get ahead of any problems that might be coming to a head. We want to be able to anticipate that. And, you know, lastly, our management team, and especially chief Palmer, what leadership you all have shown, and every resident, the dedication, the innovation, the commitment to act, so everyone here has really worked with the best interests of the taxpayers in mind, and we face a very rough period coming up, both in terms of the virus and in terms of the local business economy. All these small businesses in town, there's many federal programs out there, but to date, not one dollar of that money has flowed into this community. We really need residents, if you can, to step up, support these small businesses while maintaining, you know, the governor's orders, social distancing, all of that, but let's help them keep the lights on. You know, it's really hard. Who knows when this money is going to be flowing, if ever? It's very, very dynamic, and, you know, also the municipality itself, because these businesses aren't generating revenue, that means we're getting less revenue down the pipeline, and our revenue comes about 90 days after the fact. So right now, we're getting money from December and January coming back to the community. We are really nervous about the months ahead, and our priority is to maintain services, innovate, improve even what we can. I want to make sure, if you have not signed up for Smart 911, that you go to smart911.com. We will start sending newsletters from that, and if you'd like to be one of the thousands receiving them, we would sure appreciate that. And, you know, residents have said, well, why don't you send a mailer out? I can't tell you how quickly it's changing. By the time we would type it, print it, stamp it, mail it, it would be outdated. It's much too dynamic of a situation. It's really hard. Last thing, you know, I saw reports of the skyrocketing numbers of the COVID-19 cases in our community, as are our neighbors, and I want to remind the community that Oaklawn is a bigger municipality. Please don't look at the number of cases, but look at the rate per thousand or per hundred thousand. Oaklawn is doing better than most of our neighbors in that regard. We do have more cases, but we have many more people. A neighboring town with, you know, 10,000 or 14,000 shouldn't be compared to one, five, you know, five times the size. You know, please, you know, when you look at some of the sensational news you see out there, look at the science behind it. Try not to get too caught up in that. Lastly, you know, chief is telling me he's seeing a big increase in the domestic violence calls and domestic disturbance calls in our community, and this is a sign of the stress that we're all under. Please, everyone, go out of your way. Try to be kind. Try to smooth things out. It's not the time to start fights or, let's just get through this. It's going to be a while longer. I don't think, I don't think we know the end point, but it's going to be a little while. And please, you know, just be kind to each other, reach out, help who you can, and I want to thank all the parishes and faith-based groups who are reaching out. You are making a difference. To help someone feel connected is huge. And I just want to give a shout out to the St. Gerald's Women's Club. They organized a community mask initiative, and as of today, they are over 1,000 of those masks. It's amazing. It's huge. Those are now all going to the hospital, and, you know, you think each one takes 20 minutes to make, at least. It's quite an accomplishment for a small group of passionate people. So it just shows the difference you can make. So with that, I'm going to conclude my remarks, and just with the spirit of gratitude for all of you. And item 14 is executive session 2023. For the purpose of discussing, number one, is a motion regarding employment of a specific employer or employee of the village. May I have a motion on 14, please?
Come on.
Okay, very good. And that was by trustee Olenichak?
Correct.
Excuse me.
Second.
Okay. And we have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Mallow is our second. Thank you. Is there any discussion, gentlemen, on item 14? Hearing none. Let's call that vote, Jane.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. This concludes the conclusion of the meeting. It is 8:13. Just, I'm sorry, guys, I'm going to backtrack just for video, just talking about the governor's executive order on March 16, 2020, which suspends the open meeting yet provisions related to an in-person attendance by members of a public body. Specifically, the governor's order number one suspends the requirement in section 2.01 that members of a public body must be physically present, and two, suspend limitations in section seven on when remote participation is allowed.